Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the board meeting, November 23rd. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we expect you to rear the building, go in your vehicles. Please do not leave until subordinated by emergency service personnel. If you are a smoker, this isn't the place to do it. Get outside. Thank you very much. Yes, see you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. And before I forget, I just want to wish everybody here a very happy Thanksgiving. You and yours. Board meeting minutes approval for November 9th, 2015.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Stay in time.
It's closing.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have too much tonight. I'll start with the bills for the period of 11/13 through the 23rd. They total $1,377,513. U.S. state employee retirement, $7,934,65. That's our annual contribution, almost $800,000. U.S. state health insurance, $1,151,493. McEw for installation of theater seating, second installment. $88,696,25. Tadworth Cavan, $43,589,23. Paving on Monroe. PSC, GLI, $29,922,61. Approval, please.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, additions, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Okay. I do have a budget transfer, a very small, from bid surplus, $29,05, to battery replacement, $5,05, and security cameras, $2,400. Do I have approval?
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
I do have a lot of transfers on the second page. I'm not going to go through them all. General fund transfers are on top. Sewer fund transfers, that's just to clean up accounts for your end. If I could have approval?
Motion to accept. Present.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I do have one more item, and that is a, I'd like to approve to ban $500,000 for purchase on 27 Church Street. That would be used for parking, and that would be over five years. I don't know what their rates are right now. Probably around three, you know, I'm not sure, but I think it makes sense to do that.
Motion to accept the banning of 27 Church Street for the purposes of parking. Funds to be used to pay that off will be taken out of the meter revenue. Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Thank you very much.
Public hearings.
First two hearings this evening. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, November 23rd, 2015, 6:00 PM, 14 Baker Street, Patchoula, New York, by the Village Board of Trustees and Incorporated Village of Patchoula, to amend section 435-81.3 of chapter 435 of the village code to prohibit the operation of retailers of electronic cigarettes in the D2 and D3 business districts by proposed local law, a copy of which is on file at the office of the village clerk. At said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to meet.
Thank you. A year ago? Yes, it was. A year ago, we had a discussion about HUKA, or legislation prohibiting that within the village of Patchoula. You know, I have a serious health concern, as we did with that, and I personally do with this. Do some research on it, do some background on it, and in an article, in fact, it was NBC News that had it, and those e-juices and the aerosols they emit have been found to contain at least 10 chemicals on the California's personal list of carcinogens, including benzene, cornic acid, formaldehyde, lead nickel. Chapin said the solution were also laced with nicotine and addictive substances that hook people to cigarettes. Concern, and it's a big concern of mine, and I can't speak for any of my other members of the board, and I make that statement to open this up. What we're going to do is, we'll, this public hearing, we'll go around the board, get concerns and comments from the village board, and then we'll, we'll open to the public for discussion. Please, if what you have to say is what the people before you say, you listen very well here. We don't need to have the same issues repeated over and over again. So, make your comments. If they are different, come on up and talk to them. If they are the same as the last person, like I said, we don't need to hear it over and over again. We will, Jeff?
My concern is actually, Mr. Mayor, health issues, not decisions.
I'm sorry. Yeah, excuse me. Let's start with the council, because one of the things we're going to do, we're reading to the record, Suffolk County's law, that is part of artificial records.
The proposal tonight is unlike HUKA Retail, and where it was a ban in the village. This proposal is to restrict it in the D2 and D3 business districts, which essentially would place it only in the D1 district, which is Waverly Avenue and Route 112. So, we're not saying it's banned as HUKA, but it is restricted to those two areas, not in the core business district. That's an important distinction. But also to set the context, and to a certain extent, and again, the debate tonight is whether these retailers, this retailer, should be in the core business district. I think that the science is fairly well settled, at least if you agree with Suffolk County, and the county of Suffolk had extensive hearings on this in 2009, resulting in many local laws that regulate this. In the smoking definition, they added e-cigarette as a definition in 2009. They added that to their formal definition, general definition of smoking, the combustion of any cigar, cigarette, tobacco, or any similar article, or any combustible substance in any manner, or in any form, or the heating or ignition of an e-cigarette, which creates a vapor. It's an important definition in 2009 to add, because as we know, Suffolk County, one of the first counties in the nation to have very progressive anti-smoking legislation, and put on limitations and restrictions, that by that definitional change, made all the limitations and restrictions that we think of, or cigarettes and smoking in public places or within certain jurisdictional areas of front doors, the same for e-cigarettes. They deemed that to be the same equivalent as cigarettes. They also added a new section, chapter 792, Tobacco Products, Article 2. Their legislative intent is important.
What was that done?
This also was done in 2009. And the first instance of their legislative intent, the legislature, hereby, after extensive hearing, finds that while state and federal governments have been slow to respond meaningfully to the public health crisis caused by smoking, the Suffolk County Legislature has a long and proud history of being at the forefront, preventing us to curb smoking and its inherent dangerous risks. They found that from a legislative perspective, the dangers posed by, quote, "The dangers posed by tobacco" were not limited to cigarettes, pipes, or other traditional forms of smoking. This is also an important distinction, in that in G, quote, "The legislature also finds that these safety in smoking cessation assertions, that e-cigarettes are a healthy alternative towards moving people away from traditional smoking." The smoking cessation argument. Quote, "The legislature also finds that these safety in smoking cessation assertions made by e-cigarette companies have been disproven by laboratory tests conducted by the United States Food and Drug Administration. Indeed, these testing has shown that e-cigarettes do contain carcinogens, including nitrosamines, and toxic chemicals such as diethylene glycol." Therefore, quote, "The purpose of this article is to ban the sale of e-cigarettes and light products in Suffolk County, the persons under the age of 21, and to prohibit the use of e-cigarettes and light products in public places where traditional forms of smoking are already disallowed." There is an exemption for, for instance, cigar stores as to why they make a percentage of their sales also tobacco. E-cigarette retailers, as defined by code, will not satisfy that, because they don't sell tobacco products. And just the timeliness of it, in just last week's November 19th Court Times Record from the North Shore, there's a letter to the editor from the presiding officer of the legislature, William Doc Spencer from Centerport, who just repeats that in April of this year, the Center for Disease Control reported that e-cigarette use has tripled among middle and high school students in a single year, surpassing every other tobacco product on the market, including traditional cigarettes. Does not have to list multiple policy issues that are beyond this board, but that also does end with, let's also consider that the delivery of formaldehyde through e-cigarettes is nearly five times greater than that of traditional cigarettes. Now, the Suffolk County, that's from the Suffolk County Legislature, what's before us is the question on whether e-cigarettes, electronic cigarette retailers, and, well, HUKA Retail for a certain extent, but e-cigarette retailers are proper businesses to be in our core D2 and D3, and the proposal is to restrict them, again, only to the D1, Waverly Avenue, and Route 112. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one question, clarification, Brian. Doc Spencer is a doctor, correct?
Yes. Okay.
I would, the health issue concerns, obviously, and based on what the council's just advised aside, I think I would be towards supporting restricting this to the D1. That seems to make more sense. It has to stay out of the downtown, as we did with the village.
Yeah, I'd also agree with that, Mr. Mayor, and also, you know, like Attorney Eden just pointed out, that these e-cigarettes have made these younger kids three times more likely to start smoking e-cigarettes than regular cigarettes, right? Is that correct? And just in the way that they extract these oils from the means, you know, like such as butane, I don't agree with any of it. And for that matter, I would look to ban it myself, personally, but I think the more conservative approach is the way we're going at it, and just to move into the D1.
I assume that what we're proposing to do is to treat e-cigarettes the same way we treat cigarettes. So, places you can't smoke, you can smoke them in your own home, you can buy them in lots of places, cigarettes are sold all over the place, you just don't want an establishment that is committed to e-cigarette.
Correct.
Is that fair?
Correct.
And we're saying, if you want to do an envelope, up the block, but where Jack lives, you can do it. Sounds fine to me.
Well, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say before I begin my comment.
I just...
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, so, the legislation as proposed would then also limit, say, an existing convenience store that's in D3 from?
True question.
You know, a deli that's already selling cigarettes, for instance?
Yes.
They would not be able to add this?
Yes.
Okay.
Primary use, or is it ancillary use?
So, I mean, I don't need to repeat what everybody already said. I think, you know, there's ample evidence that some of these substances like formaldehyde are definitely not good for anybody, and especially not for us. I'm in favor of the proposal.
That's a good one. That is a good idea.
for you than cigarettes, regular cigarette tobacco. I would be in favor, I'm a smoker, I would be in favor of moving them up to 112 and Waverly Avenue, if not banning them altogether.
Any other comment?
Brian, are we prohibiting retail establishments from selling e-cigarettes, like, set on level?
If they're in the D2 and D3?
Yes, if they're in the D2 and D3, it basically, the proposals is also to ban that sale as ancillary use.
Yes. Public.
Getting the board down, it's not 70 longer. I don't think this is going to bring in some ungodly element to Main Street, and to the crowd, to bring business, to allow it in the D1, into the D3 area. I don't think, you know, that's, and that's my concern. The health concern, we can bat that ball from here to China. You know, what's it going to do to the downtown businesses? Is it going to improve them or hurt them? I spend a lot of time downtown. I would walk by that store with the patrons out front enjoying the vape cigarettes. My one and only concern at this is, will this open a floodgate for other businesses to have vape night? Emporium in their 2,000 capacity, having vape night would be an issue. Their 12-person stand, I don't see that a problem. I don't see what it's going to bring us, elements to the village that hurt us in any way. It's widely accepted, I've spent a lot of time in the city, there are some very upscale e-bars, whatever you want to call them. You know, everyone's personal opinion aside, whether you believe in it or not, of the health respects of it, it can't be done very well. The build-out for these people are going to be putting, I don't think it's going to hurt us, I'm just concerned about everybody else on the strip having vape night, would be my one and only concern. Yes, sir.
Suffolk County can't do that, because it's illegal.
I understand, Suffolk County.
Having vape nights or emporium, anybody who wants to have that.
That would be the, that would be the only concern that I would have in the issue. I don't think it's going to take away from downtown. I'm not going to spend any less money downtown than, because of allowing that store to go in twice.
I think it's somewhat philosophical, as to whether we accept it, given some of the concerns that have risen, that have risen, you know, that on health issues, do we accept the fact that this is a good thing to do? And I, as I said, personally, I have a problem on the health side. By limiting it to those two zones, you limit the world of it, you limit the service.
Okay, that is my only, like I said, I'm not going to spend any less time if you guys approve it, I'm not going to spend any more or less time if you all see me in town. I just don't want the vape night, that was my only concern. Good luck with it on this one, guys. Thank you.
Other comments?
How's everyone? It's been a while. How are you, Pat? I think a concern would be, there is an irony where we're debating the health issues on e-cigarettes when we have a business economy that's based around alcohol. I think there's a greater fear in high fructose corn syrup, where maybe we shouldn't have a cupcake place open in the future. We do have to be concerned with having a Keynesianistic aspect here in local government. I think the smallest halls of government is which democracy is the loudest, and to really put forth a restriction on a business that you guys are bringing up articles about them being important for health, when every other store is a bar. How could we do that? I think that that's a little bit, and to restrict it into one area or another area?
I guess what it comes down to, Mr. Evans, is it, the things that you have control over, the things you don't have control over. And always try to control the things you can control. The alcohol issue is accepted by New York State law, and there are restrictions in terms of times you can be open, times you can serve, ages and so forth. We have the ability somewhat to control some of this, and if we have that ability to, and that ability will somewhat limit the downside of e-cigarettes, we should take that into consideration.
But shouldn't the market itself play? Like, it almost makes me go back to old history lessons, and Thoreau saying the greatest government is that which governs the least. You know, the fact that we're picking and choosing which businesses should...
But picking and choosing businesses is based upon the value of that business? If a mattress store wanted to open up in town, the positive effect much outweighs the negative effect. This, I look at it, that there are certain negatives in this, that I personally have a problem with.
No, I don't have a dog in the race. I haven't smoked a e-cigarette or anything.
I know, you know.
I'm just saying, keeping that out of small government, you know, you brought up the conservative aspect. I think any conservative blackfeather, you voted for it after saying that, but that's just me. But that's just, I don't have a dog in the race. I think we just, being at the smallest end of government is when we need to be, I think, most liberal in those ways, you know what I'm saying? It's just something to choose. I don't have a dog in the race, but I would say it's a dangerous precedence to pick, you know, like, so.
Other comments? Any other comments, sir? You see where the fold is, I figured.
My name is Edward Marinelli. I don't have a dog in the race either, but I do have a daughter in college, and she goes to Upstate Culpeper Skill, and as a father, I guess you could say, maybe I do have a dog in the race. The uncertainties of this type of product on the market, some of the things you've already discussed, these are my concerns as a father, allowing these types of products to be readily available to somebody my daughter's age, 21, who maybe she should know better. But it's clear on the lack of regulation, it's clear on the lack of the things we know as far as health concerns. These are things that, I use the example of a mattress store. I don't open the paper and see, you know, issues against a bed or uncomfortable mattress causing people to end up in the hospital. And in my opinion, until that is rectified, until they determine, you know, with some good legislation, whether these things are even deadly or not, these types of products, I don't think it's something that, you know, as, from a moral standpoint, why would we want that stuff in a town? I grew up in Patchoula, let me just say that, okay? I went to Barton Avenue Elementary, Saxon, I went to Patton Alley, graduated in 1986. You know, it was, it was rough enough growing up then than it is now. We have all these concerns with our kids, and what they're, what they're doing, what they're not doing. You know, I consider myself a good parent, that's why I'm here tonight.
Appreciate it.
You know, I think that it's very important that we, at least I would like to understand, I think as all you would, what these products are, you know. I just got through reading a bunch of different articles today, and I read the same article that you cited, sir, about triple the usage from 2013 to 2014 amongst high school students, and they don't even know what they're getting half the time. The other part of it is that it does promote illicit drug use. That is also a tremendous amount of articles. And on the policeman's notice, they say they don't even know what these kids are inhaling or not, because there's no clear-cut way to handle a situation when someone walks up to you with a vape pen in their hand, if it's filled with drugs or not, because these things, according to things that I've read, are, you know, are easily contained, the smell, the taste, all of it, and you can just inhale the oils. I don't personally smoke this, nor any of these items, or have any interest in doing so. But if you could put one more barrier between something that is at least still considered unhealthy for our kids to consume, then I'm all for that. And Patchoula didn't get to where it is now, allowing things like this to occur. I mean, we have a great town, it took a long time, and to a lot of credit to yourself, Mayor, I mean, you know, well, the whole board, you know, we, I just opened a restaurant in Riverhead, and they referenced the Pontieri player quite often. You know, and we're looking to do a lot of good things out there, but I just don't think that this is one of them, and Patchoula's doing fine without this kind of business in town. And I just don't see a need until, I guess I'll end with this, I don't see a need to have anything like this anywhere until the verdict is in, and we know exactly what's going on with this stuff on all different levels, because it's dangerous, and it's already a proven fact that it's dangerous. And that is not coming from my mouth, that's coming from the articles that I read every day, leading up to today, being here with you fine folks, so.
Mr. Marinelli, can you just stick your address for the record, please?
Sure. Three, ten, you go, Road, North Patchoula.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Here it comes, sir.
My name is Eric Klauskach. I do have a dog in the race, because I was the one who wanted to open a bigger shop in Patchoula.
Excuse me, Mayor, can you spell your last name for me? I'm sorry.
K-L-A-U-S-C-H-K. And if you don't mind, I have some documentation from the master of public health of Pennsylvania. And this was something that he handed out to the Food and Drug Administration. Let me give you a second to read over the vote points at the beginning. And those are the only, those are the first three pages from 150-page documentation that he gave to the SEAD. But this seems to spell out... I'd also like to say, I grew up in Patchoula, I'm a alum at Belleport High School, you were my vice principal.
I took a look at you, the hair was different, though.
Yeah, no hair anymore.
Were you?
Ninety-seven.
I'm glad you said ninety-six.
Yeah. I played football for Belleport. I used to be a smoker, I am no longer a smoker because of using a personal vaporizer. And I would like to say that there's also a distinction between an electronic cigarette and a personal vaporizer, which is, an electronic cigarette is made by big tobacco. So, no idea what's in those, they don't list what's in there. As far as a personal vaporizer goes, the ingredients that are in a personal vaporizer oil, okay? It's probably glycol, which is the same stuff you find in an inhaler, that helps you breathe. Vegetable glycerin, which is an ultra, ultra-refined vegetable oil, and flavor extracts, which, there was a problem in the beginning with that, but the industry self-regulated itself and got rid of the things that aren't supposed to be in there, the extracts you're supposed to use are ones that are intended for vaping. If it's not intended for vaping, yes, it will have a lot of those products and things of that nature that should not be in there. And some companies that are out there right now, which I'm well aware of which ones do, do not go by these regulations. So, you will find increased amounts of formaldehyde and stuff like that. The other thing is, a lot of the, and if you read that, the FDA down here, it specifically states that the FDA misrepresented a lot of its scientific and empirical evidence since 2009. Flavor extracts, which, there was a problem in the beginning with that, but the industry self-regulated itself and got rid of the things that aren't supposed to be in there. The extracts you're supposed to use are ones that are intended for vaping. If it's not intended for vaping, yes, it will have a lot of those products and things of that nature that should not be in there. And some companies that are out there right now, which I'm well aware of which ones do, do not go by these regulations. So you will find increased amounts from Alabada and stuff like that. The other thing is, a lot of the, and if you read that, the FDA down here, it specifically states that the FDA misrepresented a lot of its scientific and empirical evidence since 2009. Because what they were doing was, and this isn't in this particular three-page report right here, but they were using the vaporizers at the maximum wattage, which they can go up to 200 watts. And they were using, inside of a personal vaporizer, there's a thing called a coil, which is the heating element for the oil. And what happened is, they were using coils that were three to six months old. You're supposed to replace them at least once every month. So they were basically using this information from, basically, there was no, there was no control. There was no anything to it. And most of the testing that they did was on rats. It wasn't on humans. And if you look at what the United Kingdom has done, they actually did all their testing on humans. And they, the United Kingdom, who is light-years ahead of the United States in studies as far as electronic cigarettes go, they actually promote it. And they want to see the majority, because the smoking population over there is much larger than it is here in the United States, when it comes down to, you know, on a person-to-person basis. But they actually promote it, so that way it helps people get away from cigarettes. I personally know, I don't know, ten handfuls of people who have gotten away from cigarettes completely because of vaporizers. And you've all seen those Truth commercials on TV where you're inhaling 7,000 chemicals. You know, when it comes down to 7,000 chemicals versus five to 10 chemicals, I'd much rather have five to 10 chemicals in my body than 7,000. I do understand that, you know, vapor is not 100% safe for you. And I'm not saying that it is. All I'm saying is, it's a healthier alternative to help people quit smoking. And me personally, since I have quit, I haven't, next year is a month, next month is a year for me. But I haven't touched a cigarette since last December. It's, it really is a healthier form. And as far as the whole drug aspect of it, the store that we wanted to open would not be promoting anything drug-related. So no glass, no cookies, no anything like that. We wanted to go from a strict e-cigarette standpoint. And considering the amount of, coming from a business aspect, okay? This is a $2 billion industry, okay? And it's a much healthier industry than cigarettes, who the Big Tobacco is pumping all sorts of money into politicians' pockets right now to get it to look as bad as possible, including the FDA. That's why they put out these falsified studies, because they're losing billions from these electronic cigarettes. It really, like, my mother died of lung cancer because of cigarettes. My partner's uncle died of lung cancer because of cigarettes. My mom passed, she got diagnosed right around now with lung cancer, and she passed last April. So, six months, she was gone. And she almost smoked five, maybe six cigarettes a day. But yeah, it's, that was the whole reason, like, why I feel so strongly on this. And when my mother was in the hospital and going through chemo and everything like that, she was having problems with her withdrawals from nicotine. And she asked her doctor about electronic cigarettes. And he's like, "Yeah, go for it. You know, it's a much healthier thing. I'd much rather see you do that than go out into the courtyard and have a cigarette." You know, like, it's... It really, like, and as far as children are concerned, if, like, our store will have one of those things on 21 and over, a sign right on there, you know, carding everyone, everything, you know, we plan on following the law to the T. When it comes down to most children being able to get their hands on it, it's because they do it on the internet. It's not from vapor shops and vapor lounges and vapor bars selling it to them. It's because you can go on eBay, you just buy it. There's nothing stopping you. So just as long as your parent is, you know, like, and this stuff gets delivered right to their house. You know what I'm saying? So this really is an issue more with the parents allowing their children to do this and have access to these things. You know, it's, it's not the local vapor shops that are giving children this ability to do something that they shouldn't be doing in the first place. I don't know what else to say other than it really is a healthier alternative to smoking. It does help people quit. It helped me quit. It helped my brother quit. Yeah, it helped my partner quit. It helped numerous numbers of other people quit. You know, and it really, yeah, I just wanted to bring an aspect into Patro that would promote a healthier point of view for, you know, smoking in general. You know, like, and, you know, and this is not a knock on Patro, but I know you guys do have a cigar bar down here. And that is tobacco. And it does promote mouth cancer, throat cancer, lung cancer if they inhale it, gum cancer, nose cancer, I can't even, skin cancer. Can't even tell you how many things. You know, but as, as of right now, and personal vaporizers have been around for a little over 10 years now, there has not been one instance of someone using the devices properly when they're instructed to do so properly. You know, because there is a little bit of, you know, like, you have to have a little bit of knowledge in order to, you know, start doing something like this. And if you guide it the wrong way, you're asking for, you know, trouble. You really are. But there has not been one instance of somebody getting sick or being hospitalized because of an electronic cigarette. The only people who have been hospitalized before I do electronic cigarettes are people who were poorly guided through power sources, because the thing exploded in their pocket. It's because they were given the wrong device, with the wrong batteries or the wrong adapter tank to go with the device. And, you know, like, I'm extremely knowledgeable on these things. I've been researching vaping for well over a year now. I'm up to date on almost every scientific study that comes out, you know, to do with it. And I keep up to date on it, almost on a daily basis. So I'm very knowledgeable on the topic. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments? I do have a few questions. What's the difference between an e-cig and a vaporizer?
And e-cigs are the ones that you see, like, Views and Logic, where the tick glows to a blue light. And you have the cartridges that you replace and you put in there. There are filters, and most places that sell these are gas stations. And inside those... Snuffles. This is an e-cigarette.
That cylinder goes...
This cylinder right here screws into right there.
Now, will you be selling those?
We don't have any plans on them yet. We want to stick with these.
Does that mean you don't have any plans on them, or if the market is there, you will sell it, or?
We would rather not. We would rather stick with the ones that you fill yourself, you know what's going in there. You know, this is the lower end. We are, we want to focus and be a higher-end vape shop. This right here would be, I'd say, probably a $40 or $50 vaporizer. This one right here, $200 vaporizer. This is a box. It lists the wattage, temperature, the owns, the battery power, like that. So you know exactly how much wattage and stuff is going into there. These are a little lower end, so they don't have all the digital information. But now that the, the market is getting more into where you can see all the wattage, you can see the temperature, you can see that. And that was another big problem with these things right here, is some of these heat it up almost 1,000 degrees.
Yeah. So the vaporizers, do you put water in there? I mean, what goes into it?
It's in oil.
It's in oil? But then what makes the vapor?
When you inhale it, it's just like an inhaler.
Right.
Okay? You inhale it, and then you exhale water vapor. That's what happens.
And then what about with those? Because that looks totally...
I don't know what's in these, and they don't list the ingredients. So there is no way to tell exactly what is in these. And these are all made by Big Tobacco. So Big Tobacco, you know, like, even though they say this is a 1.8% nicotine one here, that is the equivalent of a cigarette, okay? The oil that I have in there is a .6. So it's actually 1/3 of a cigarette. I bounce back and forth between .6 and .3. I'm not fully off of nicotine yet, and this is a little stressful. But yeah, the...
But you believe in it, yeah, .6?
For right now. But this one little cartridge right here is the equivalent of two packs of cigarettes. That one little cartridge is the equivalent of two packs of cigarettes. Whereas you get these in 15- and 30-milliliter bottles. The oil that's in there, okay? Those range anywhere from, I'd say, $10 to $25 a bottle. And that bottle will last you, depending upon how much you're using the vaporizer that week, anywhere from a week, two weeks, three weeks, a month, you know, like, but... So you actually get a lot less nicotine out of these than you would one of these. Because when you're, to be honest with you, when you're just sucking on this thing, you get no nicotine satisfaction whatsoever. Like, I started out with these. And I was going through one of these little things at two packs worth of nicotine. You know, like, you pull on it and you barely get anything from it. So the whole purpose behind these was actually not to decrease the amount you smoke, but increase the amount you smoke. So Big Tobacco is at fault for that, because they purposely designed it like that. They did. Like, I don't know why, but with personal vaporizers, you pull on the thing once, and you're good for half an hour, an hour. You know, like, you get that craving succeeded. As far as the chemicals go, it does, they do have some of the same chemicals as cigarettes, but not nearly as many, and you get a whole hell of a lot less. The FDA study where the attorney stated that, you know, it was, what was it? Five to 15 times higher, he said, okay? That was done through full supply studies where they were using equipment that shouldn't have been used. They should have been using fresh equipment, and they never did. Because, you know, they test the air afterwards. That's how they come up with all these things. But there was no control. How do you know that, like, those levels weren't in the air to begin with? You know, like, the place they could have done it, like, somebody could have been in there 10 minutes ago smoking a cigarette. But there was no control for anything. So, you know, the FDA, little flaw.
What do they do in these things? Do people go in there and you just buy? You can stand by the... What is it that you propose? A store, or they buy stuff?
It's a resale establishment with a comfortable setting.
What does that mean?
So basically, you walk in, there's a bar at the counter. Like, you know, there's showcases with the, with the vaporizers and the tanks and everything like that. You walk in, there's a bar with menus. You can see what's available to you. You can try the different liquids. And, because you don't want to walk into someplace and be like, "Oh, yeah, give me that one", even though I have no idea what it tastes like. I'm about to spend $25 on something, and I might hate it. You know, like, they're able to try the liquid. If they like it, they buy it, and then leave.
So they can take a puff?
Yeah, right there.
Whatever you call it.
But they don't like sofas and chairs, where people might be sitting, hanging out for a couple of hours?
That's not the intent of it. It's just to give a more relaxed setting to the environment. We do want to set up some tables. Because also on top of, you know, this, there are rebuildable coils that you can make, so that way you're not spending money on coils themselves. Where you actually take wire and organic cotton, and you make coils yourself. You know, which is the replaceable part inside of these. And that takes a class for someone to, like, learn how to do it, because you can't just dive right into something like that and you just, "Yeah, I know what I'm doing." There's no such thing.
But now, now, somebody goes into your shop?
Yes.
Can they sit on one of these couches and puff away at their vaporizer?
We would like to try them.
Do this indoors, like?
Oh, no.
Do you know?
Why do you want us to do this? The answer was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, in every vapor lounge that is in Suffolk County, you can. You walk right in, you sit at the bar, you try the different vapors till you find one you like, and you buy it.
Now, and I understand that in a lot of places, they're trying to ban this from indoor use in office situations, enclosed situations. How's that going to affect your business model if that happens?
Well, just like in New Jersey right now. New Jersey actually has that in place, where even in vapor shops, you cannot try the flavors inside. So we would go by what New Jersey is currently doing, and we hold on to someone's license. They go outside, they try it, they come back in. That's what they do in New Jersey right now.
I think, first, you're doing a terrific job trying to defend the whole industry. You really, your knowledge is very, very good. And I think you should be commended. You're doing a great job trying to take the weight of the world on your shoulders for this whole industry to do this. So I do admire your testimony tonight in comparison. I think that Suffolk County has a slightly different interpretation on being... on being able to smoke inside. Um, if you read the, the Suffolk County Code, Chapter 792, and Suffolk County Code 754 on smoking. And I discussed this with our local county legislator as well, uh, what the interpretation was. And their intention was that when they adopted the regulation to treat e-cigarettes and vape as the same as smoking, it would fit the general definition and provisions that went around cigarette smoking. So they viewed it as the same. And if you can't smoke cigarettes inside a certain location, you also can't smoke, or inhale, or blow vape, or those kind of things. And, um, that was his interpretation of the law. Uh, I read the code, it seemed like it was consistent that way. Um, and, you know, obviously increasing it to twenty-one. But I, I think that the Suffolk County, and the Suffolk County Health Department has a slightly different, um, interpretation of whether you can actually smoke or vape. You call it smoking?
No.
Vaping? Okay. Uh, vaping is not smoke.
Inside.
Clouds.
Yeah.
Well, they talk about that too. They, how they, they, they talk about that their definition of the treated the same, that they would treat Suffolk County by definition treats vaping and uses e-cigarettes or those kind of things the same as smoking.
There are a lot of people breaking the law.
All right, so if I walked into the Village United Pub and sat at the bar and, and started vaping?
That would be illegal in Suffolk County.
Then you're, you're not allowed to...
But why is that place different than your place?
Yeah. Because my place is specifically, just like the cigar bar. You can go in there, you can smoke cigars, you can drink your brandy.
But here's the definitional difference. And again, we're not the Suffolk County Legislature. We're just the mere Village of Patrick's Board of Trustees. This is their, the Suffolk County law. The Suffolk County law has an exception for, uh, tobacco products that have... I wanna get you the exact definition. That, that sells... Smoking in, in, is prohibited. Smoking, again, is defined to include vaping. Smoking is prohibited in retail establishments that generate eighty-nine percent or less of their total annual gross revenues from the sale of cigarettes, cigars, pipes, chewing tobacco, et cetera, et cetera, goes on. The tobacco products, you don't sell any tobacco products, correct? So you would not fit under the exception of eighty-nine percent or less. And that's the cigar store exception. That's why you can't smoke in a bar because they don't sell tobacco products. They wouldn't reach that ninety percent or above revenue stream. And I'm not sure how you, how you would fit into that same section.
I, like I said, I see ourselves as more of a smoking cessation. You know, to keep people away from cigarettes and cigars. And, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure why they would classify it like that when... Yeah, I'm, I'm just not a hundred percent sure why they would classify it like that.
All right.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Our legislation does not distinguish between, uh, these two different products that he described. One delivers a little bit of nicotine, the other one delivers a lot of nicotine. Uh, our legislation is technocratic.
Correct. Correct.
Any comments by the board?
Can it fine, if you're organized? Can we differentiate? Okay, under the...
I think that's a challenge of this new technology. I think that's one of the challenges that even Speaker alluded to on, uh, usage of those different types of instruments.
But Brian, we, we actually have the authority to ban this stuff altogether. We're, we're... I know that.
We're acting, we're only acting on the, yes, we do. And we're only acting under the zoning code. Our restriction, we're not, we don't, we don't have a Department of Health in Suffolk County. We're only exercising our zoning code.
Yep.
As, as we can ban, as we can limit a tunicane processing plant out of our business district?
A tannery.
Tannery. And or into all other businesses like that.
At tour.
So we have the, we have... We can do that. But this would be permitted in the Long Waverly Avenue, along... We're not actually banning it.
Correct.
We're just... Now, you know, we have a couple members in the Patrick Chamber of Commerce here, and, um, I wouldn't be interested to know what, uh, what they would have to say about these things, if they, if they had any comments whatsoever.
Lori, Lori. David's coming through.
Thanks for putting me on the spot. Um, David Kennedy, uh, from the Executive Director of the Patrick Chamber of Commerce. I'll be totally honest with you. Until I saw the, uh, the agenda item, I wasn't even aware this was a public, uh, for public discussion. Uh, obviously, I've been very attentive to the discussion, and will be bringing this back to the, uh, to the Chamber Board that this discussion is taking place. And certainly, if a decision has an order been made by the Village Board, and they want the opinion of the Chamber, I'm sure I can, uh, I guess, uh, some kind of, whether it's even if it's a neutral opinion because I'm sure there's gonna be, uh, people on both sides of it. You know, of course, obviously, Commerce, you know, we're not the Health Department, we're Chamber of Commerce. We wanna see business. Uh, and, you know, personally, uh, I know very clearly that this is a very popular, uh, activity. Uh, and, you know, and you could argue that it could fit in, uh, the popular, you know, what's going on in the community. Um, but, you know, uh, we'd like to discuss that, and I'm certainly learning a lot of different things. It does seem like it's such a new industry, and there's so much, uh, new things out there about it. It is, uh, you guys are a little bit on the cutting edge here of, of, of how to, how to deal with that, so, uh... You know, but, uh, I mean, certainly, uh, from the Chamber of Commerce, I can say it's not, at least not prohibiting it. At least you are, at least providing an area for it. So certainly, things could change. And when science and technology come out that show that maybe this is a much more friendly version than, uh, what being originally told to us, that, uh, these things could be expanded. Well, this law that's being proposed now has passed doesn't mean it couldn't be repealed if, uh, something came along to change, uh, the minds, uh, of the boards. So, but, um, if there was no, uh, public decision, the public hearing, I'll make sure that at least get some kind of written recommendation or, uh, opinion from the Chamber.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Brian, just like, thank the gentleman. I forgot his name. We're ready for a very clear and thorough presentation. You did a good job, thank you.
One last comment.
Of all the people that approach the business in this, in the Villages, gotta admire this guy's honesty. You know, we're gonna have occasional music. Now, we have Village Police sitting up front doing, yeah, sound readings all night long that our taxpayer's dollars are going to. At least he was honest. You gotta at least take that. And I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen, but... Thank you. You know, there've been a lot of people explaining greatly between what they've said here and promised us and what they're operating now. So, we get...
Any comments by the board?
We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion to accept is presented. The motion to accept as presented, limitations to...
Do you want...
Do you want only...
Motion?
Second? We got a second?
Second.
On favor? So carry.
Post.
Post? No?
We can vote.
I, I was almost hoping we, we, uh, set this aside for, I don't know, we can't.
You say opposed, are you opposed?
I'm opposed to the legislation.
Okay.
I doubt it. Yeah.
You're opposed to what?
In this fashion, based on what I've heard tonight.
Okay, that's, so I'm just, you're all opposed. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having it on Waverly Avenue and 112.
Actually, I'm, I'm opposed to the whole thing. If we had, if we had a blank slate to take Richard Evans' point on this. We have a blank slate, and we could ban cigarettes. Ban cigarettes, the Village of Patrick. We have a blank slate. I smoked two and a half packs a day when I was in the yard. There was always a cigarette in my mouth, okay? I was one hundred percent addicted. I'm an addicted person. I banned them. Ban this. It's only point six nicotine, not one point two. So I'm, let's put them up on Waverly.
Perhaps we could... I would make a motion to reserve decisions so we have a little bit more time to investigate some of the questions.
Gotta get the rest of the votes in, Lori. Too late for that. We get two more, you're a yes?
I support the legislation under the P one.
So, Sam, it's up to you.
I support the legislation, I suppose D one, restricted to D one.
And as I said earlier, I would also ban the vaporing, but that's not why we're here. We're here for the legislation that's before us, this resolution. And I would have to agree that we follow what we have here for this resolution.
All right, seven yes, that's four.
That's four. Okay. Motion's passed, legislation's passed, that's written.
Thank you.
Do I need to change it to vaporize? The, the legislation is passed as presented. It's being limited to D one business, which limits it to Waverly Avenue and 112. Thank you. Set a poll here.
Okay, our second public hearing tonight. Notice is hereby given that public hearing be held on Monday, November twenty-third, six p.m. fourteen bakers from Patchogue View by the Village Board of Trustees, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, and Section 435 dash fourteen point one to Chapter 435 of the Village Code to establish a six-month moratorium on development approvals for apartment buildings, apartment houses, boarding houses, rooming houses, garden apartments, townhouses, condominiums, housing cooperatives, mixed-use developments containing four or more dwelling units, and any multifamily or multi-unit dwellings containing four or more dwelling units. Copy of which proposal of the laws on file at the Office of the Village Clerk at said public hearing and persons interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
Since two thousand and four, we've constructed in and around the downtown in particular almost seven hundred residential units. There are another, about a hundred and twenty different other spots within the Villages that have, that have been built. Like all things, there's a point in time you should need to take a step back and say, "Okay, what has been the effect on the village? To the positive end or the, obviously, the negative? Where are other places that may or may not be developed? And do, do we want to have development on those properties? But in particular, what are the effects of the increased density from public safety position? From traffic? From impact, whether it be on school district, on the municipality itself? To do that, you need to take a half a step back and look at it in its totality. Each one of the developments that were put in place were very carefully selected, believe it or not. And a lot of people don't believe they were. But if you take a look at Copper Beach, Mr. Morgo was here, and he helped with the design. He helped getting the funding for it. And he really was very instrumental in making it happen at the beginning. Blighted properties, they needed to be redeveloped. My position has always been, from the first day I came into office, for downtown to survive, we need to put feet on the street. We need to, we need to put people in and about our downtown to make it be the downtown it was. And some of us grew up in this village, then other of us moved into the village. After, after Copper Beach came Bay Village. If we remember what was at Bay Village at that point in time. It's a Smithport and White House, two boarding houses. Considered very much blighted properties, probably a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty people living on this four acres of property. Lori Devlin always tells a story. She lives around a corner from it, and she would probably get on a monthly basis at least one letter about a pedophile being moved into one of those addresses. We had a developer come in and say, "If you gave us the density to allow us to build a few more homes than you would normally provide, we'll run the civil lines, and we'll take that, those properties out." And they bought out to the mountains. They built what is now Bay Village, is now South Ocean Avenue. Just a beautiful, beautiful development that has really changed the whole temperament of what happens down there. To, to add to the fact that when it was the Smithport and the White House, when it was the boarding houses, we had a public safety officer in front of the deli there every morning, because that was a bus stop, from six-thirty in the morning when the high school kids are on the bus, to nine o'clock because of some of the clientele that was coming out of those buildings. Hard space. Forty-five units of affordable housing now. Copper Beach is fifty percent affordable. You'd never know if I'm looking at it because people have a certain perception of what they believe affordable housing is. Hard space is forty-five units of affordable housing. Those forty-five units, somewhat restricted to artists. To gather the forty, forty-three out of the forty-five artists, and the other two that are in there, the people that qualified and they had space in there. But they are now workers within the arts community, people who set up and become part of it. Again, then it was a vacant parking lot. You can use that vacant parking lot right now.
It's much better, Lori.
But there's a vacant parking lot there. Then, we talked to New Village. If we remember what was on those properties, and sometimes people, like, have selective memories to what was there. They had a fifty thousand square foot department store that had been empty for a number of years. You went around the corner to a library over by a college that had been vacant for about ten to twelve years. To the next corner, you came up to Maggio's Boeing Alley, which was vacant for probably thirty years. And the only two buildings that were really thriving buildings, the Bank of America and the Brick House. Along the Hades, you had three, three small places. And the only business out of the four businesses that were there, the three businesses that were there, was Patrick Print. You know, you have Thirteeth Thirty-One West now. There's a laundromat, a sign store, two vacant stores.
Tuxedo store.
And a tuxedo store. And upstairs in that were maybe a half dozen businesses. Those two hundred and ninety-one residential units of which, whether people wanna believe it or not, it's about ninety percent, either leased and or occupied. They will lease out the properties down below. They're very, very selective. Obviously, they would put people in there if, if the right businesses came along. They have a price based upon what they wanna have in the place. So, I guess my point is, is that in each of them, in each of those places, they were selected to, to have things happen there because of a need. And that need was to surround the downtown with people, to take care of blighted properties down on South Ocean Avenue. Take care of a blighted, some blighted property that was over where you, where you have the River View, which is off of River Avenue. That was a marina. That was a form of oil terminal at the time. So, all the decisions were made for these eight hundred units based upon the conditions of the property and the need for us to move forward. The, the need for us to bring people back into town. Average age in Copper Beach right now is about thirty-eight years old. It's, it is exactly what we keep reading about in the paper and what we keep hearing in the paper. in the paper and what we keep hearing in the paper. So, we've now built those things. We've now taken the position of where we're at. Now we need to take a position on where we want to go, what are our other needs? You know, we have places in the village where requests have been made, some of them perfectly situated for additional housing, some of them in the middle of residential neighborhoods, but because of archaic zoning would allow it. We need to look at those. We need to look at zoning code. We need to look at impact on neighborhoods and overall impact on the community. So, this isn't just the whim of the thing that happens. It really is the next step in the development of this community. Where do we want to be and what do we want to do? And, you know, I had gotten a phone call today, and there'd been a lot of discussion. And I got a phone call from Linda in the advance about an issue that the chamber is talking about with Dennis Smith, Executive Director for the BID, about the big stores in town, and are there ways for us to bring them in, the 9,000-square-foot stores, is there a way to get grants or funding to make them into 1,500, 2,000 square foot stores? Again, that's what we look at now from where we were before. When it comes to housing, we do the same thing. Where do we want to be? What do we want to do? And how do we want to get there? So, this is a how do we want to get there kind of a discussion that we have. So, and Brian, move back after the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second public hearing tonight is on a moratorium, as you get on a moratorium on development, lays out the sections for consideration. It is prohibited, any complexes of four or more dwelling units. It will apply to all the zoning districts in the confines of the village. It will be for a period of 180 days. Period can be extended by application to the board, provides for penalties if anyone violates it, and also note provide an alleviation of hardship, which is important on moratoriums in Patchogue, always taking the position that there are certain projects based upon timing and need, that when case can be made, if there's evidence that the hardship should be alleviated, an applicant can make that exception as to raise to the level of being extraordinary hardship. Board of Trustees can review that and potentially grant that exclusion.
One of the things too, just aside from this, is that there will not be a decision made this evening. We will take, we will close the hearing, and then we will forward the minutes and the comments made this evening to Suffolk County Planning. Suffolk County Planning, all moratoriums have to go through Suffolk County Planning, and they have, I think it was a 45-day?
Thirty.
A 30-day, but with the holidays, we'll probably work for a decision coming into January. So, and we can look to do this. You know, one of the complaints I was about moratoriums is they seem to go on forever. Well, this isn't a go-on forever moratorium. It'll be six months with the possibility of renewal for six, if need be, and so determined by this board within another public hearing. So, it's just not going to be extended, extended, and extended, because there are people that are looking to invest, people with properties that are looking to improve their properties, and it would be fair to either them or the public to play the extension game forever with this. It'll be six months when Suffolk County Planning meets their recommendations.
And also, you want to consider at that time, the appointment, or once we have the Suffolk County Planning comments back, the potential appointment of a committee.
And that committee will be made up of, Lori is going to chair, and there'll be another member of the board on that, and then there'll be people from the community. And I've asked Mr. Morgul to sit in on it, whose background in housing is more extensive. Most of our backgrounds and anything we've all ever done. I've spoken to Peter Alkwech Roy on the Housing Partnership, and I've also reached out to the RASH Foundation. The Housing Partnership, again, because of their expansive use and their detail in housing. The RASH Foundation, because they've done a lot of research over the years on housing and housing in communities and their effect on downtown redevelopment. So, it's not just going to be inside, you know, baseball kind of committee. It's going to really be one that's going to have the strength and experience, people that experience outside of the village, be able to take a look at what we're doing inside the village. Lori, comment? Natalie, you're going to chair.
I'll just chair. I have my partner, Sal Police.
Well, that makes change a little bit.
That may change.
Because of some different things.
Okay.
But I mean, I think Paul really said a lot of what I could have said, but that's
fine, because you do it so eloquently. Very proud of all the development that's gone on over the years. I think it's been, it's been done right within the various circumstances as they presented themselves, and we've got a lot of new members of the community who are making it a better place.
I'm sitting here tonight.
Yes, some new members of the community who I recognize out in the audience. I think that in the early days, if you go back to Copper Beach, we had to be very proactive in attempting to woo developers to Patchogue, because people weren't looking at Patchogue as a place to develop. They really weren't. And we were very successful at that because we were very proactive. And I think now, we're being proactive in a different manner, that we're being proactive to take a look at what remaining parcels are in there, what zoning challenges are there, and look at it in a comprehensive way in the context of what's been done and where we're hoping to go. So, I think the committee will be a good way to approach this, especially with members of the community, experts on housing, and our attorney, Egan, and two trustees. I think that that will give us a good opportunity to hopefully craft something that we can bring back to the board.
Any other comments by the board?
Yeah, you know, there's usually two reasons, I guess, why we have a moratorium. And one would be if things were not going well, we stopped and said, oh, maybe we have to come up with another plan. And the other, unfortunately, this is our issue, is that things are going so well that you have to stop and say, you know, maybe catch up on some of the things, make sure we're not missing anything in between. And I would support a moratorium. I think that, you know, I've talked several times about our little storefront to storefront, and so many things in the infrastructure that have to be done and that need attention to support the population of our community as it is. We gotta push the pavement. Patchogue this summer, with 25% of the roads, I think, are paved, the sidewalks curving, those kinds of things, money for the parks are coming. So, yeah, I think it is time for the moratorium to give us a chance to catch up on all of those things and then get back to that plan.
Any other comments by the board?
I have a question or clarification. There are a couple of projects that are shovel-ready that they're approved already. Will this moratorium affect those if they're delayed?
If today?
No. It would, this is only for approvals, preliminary or final, or site plan, delaying, or any special approvals, special requirements, or others that are required from this board, the zoning board, or the planning board. If a project is already through its planning process and zoning process and is in the building permit stage, it would be exempt.
So, but if they get recycled for whatever reason, financing, will this moratorium apply?
If they already have had our approvals?
Yeah. Projects with approved site plans or issued building permits prior to this act are exempt from the moratorium.
Either or.
Site plans or.
Yes.
Keep it, Lori. That's fair enough. My explanation is that we're not hurting a builder that's in the middle of something. That'd be terrible. I was one of the first village residents on Main Street that had seen the growth since 2007. And, yeah, you know, taking a break at this point, as long as we're not hurting a developer sitting at a bunch of borrowed money or something, that'd be terrible. You know, nursing homes still want to continue going. That'd be, okay, that's, yeah, these people that borrow money, they gotta go get work. Yeah, we need this, you know, to hang on to what we've got and see what we've got before we start. I know so many people that are trying to, yes, subdivide their houses and things, and, yeah, you get your work cut out for yourself with that. And I don't know how that's going to come about. That's going to be some very interesting meetings comes about, what constitutes subdividing and how many people even put in. And that really does need to be, and I'm glad we're doing this, stopping this, because there are, I know people that are trying to do this, and it's, it's going to be an issue in the future. The big developers, they'll make it. But, yeah, I think this is a very good move on part of the village in that aspect, as long as we're not hurting somebody in the middle of something that's in construction already. Thank you. Your time.
Mr. Morgul?
Can I make a quick comment?
You can go, Patty.
No, I just wanted to say that Dennis came here as a renter, but is now invested by purchasing in the village, which is exactly the whole intent of all this building. So...
That's the spectrum. That's a good thing.
By the way, have to watch some college makeup videos.
They play the University of arrogance?
Of course.
It is good to be here tonight. Good to see you again, Mr. Mayor. It's been a very long time. Not long enough. I am glad I came here tonight, because among other things, I learned why cigar stores allow people to smoke and you can't in other places. That's going to be good at Christmas parties. I can discuss that, like I know what I'm talking about. The point of fact, though, I want, as Trustee Devlin said, the mayor said most of the things I was going to say, anyway. And, but I am, I'm very happy I came, because as some of you know, it's not because I can't keep a job. I've had a lot of form of positions. I was Commissioner of Economic Development. I was Suffolk County's Chief Deputy County Executive, and for almost 17 years, I was President and Chief Executive Officer of the Long Island Housing Partnership. And when my name appeared as someone the mayor wanted to be on the moratorium committee, I received a call from a housing advocate with whom I worked. And she said to me, how can you be on a moratorium for residential development? And I think I said yes, not only because I'm so impressed with the work that you have done in this village. I remember, as the mayor alluded to, the early days of Copper Beach Village. I was Economic Development Commissioner at the time, Chair of the Work Force Housing Committee, and we were looking to create homes to keep our young people here. I would disagree with one thing you said, Mr. Mayor, when you said if you look at Copper Beach Village, you would never know it was affordable homes, 50% affordable homes. I submit to you, if you go around Suffolk County and look at the homes that were built, that are, they don't meet the perception. The perception was created in the 50s and 60s. Anything that's been built now looked like Copper Beach Village, but with that caveat, it was only because of the mayor's forbearance, because when he came to us and said he wanted to put 19 single properties together to acquire them and assemble them, to create this kind of, these kinds of homes for young people and empty nesters, we all thought he was a little crazy, because we were looking for easier places to develop. But it was because of the will that Paul had and others in the town had that it happened, and I'm very proud of it as well. I'm supporting this moratorium, because as was said, it's always a good idea to evaluate. A moratorium can be an excellent planning tool. I've seen good moratoria and bad moratoria, and the good ones always have certain things in common, and I think you have these. Oh, it sounds like you do. One of the most important things is to have a set term, and you have one of six months. I don't know if any of you feel familiar with the moratorium that was out in Hampton Bays. It kept getting extended, extended, kept getting extended, it kept getting extended. You know what it resulted in? Losses. So, if you have a set term, even if it can be extended, but you have to have a set term. The other thing you have to have for a good moratorium is measurable metrics. And I think, at least you're going there, things like the impact on traffic, things like the impact on wastewater, things like impacts on the environment. As long as you have things you can measure, and there are metrics by which you can measure, then it makes sense. Finally, as someone who has been dedicated to affordable homes and creating walkable, livable communities, you can't have a balanced community with just high-density residential. You have to have other things. You seem to be going there, your zoning seems to be there, but it's always a good idea to take a look. And when this woman called me with a critical comment, I was able to answer her and say, we're talking about Patchogue. We're talking about the village. Where more than any other housing has been done in a small area, so it makes all the sense to move from Patchogue. And thank you for inviting me to the party.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Any other comments? I will make one other comment, too. Sitting in the back corner is former trustee Jerry Cream. In Copper Beach, Jerry worked very hard knocking on doors and helping to bring that to fruition, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that he worked very, very diligently.
You know, I should have said that, too, because Jerry was the acquisition mayor.
He worked with J.J. Johnson, and they went around banging on doors and rasting people out of their house. So, did some fine work today. Any other comments by the public? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution closing the moratorium and authorizing a referral to Suffolk County Planning Commission of the proposed moratorium on multifamily housing and large-scale residential development.
Motion for your second.
Second.
Trustee Fleece, all in favor?
Aye.
So, Harry, thank you very much. James, thank you. The A.D. report. It's the mayor's trustees.
Through the evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for resetting the clock.
It's only two weeks late. But that sound was just one of those things, that. Not like I had nothing to do, but it just went, and then somebody called me and said, you know, the public doesn't have the right time on it. But that's when I spent the half hour observing what happened at the crosswalk.
See that?
It was multipurpose.
I know, because I spoke to that person previously, so I knew that.
Yeah, we did. As soon as he called me, I told him I'd take care of it the next day, which we did. You have the key? I do have the key.
Yeah.
When I first got my position, it took me about two weeks to find out who had the key. So, I finally did get a copy of the key. I made several copies of the key, and I pretty much kept the vault. Actually, Andy has one. Andy Luthy has one, so.
You could put one in the key box.
We should. You can do that, too.
Is that all? Just put all those other keys that were up there?
This, you won't know this one, because you want to open that lock, you have to saw half the head. So, it's like a half the head key that you put in there. You can't mistake it. On the BID side, since the BID buys and maintains the Christmas decorations, I just want to make a comment that, as everybody knows right now, they're up. I think they look great. I came in from the west side of the village today, and the park, they were lit. They look really good. Seems to be a little bit of a problem somewhere on South Ocean Avenue.
And it's a few around.
It will, yeah. We'll get a home with EPW. We'll get that squared away. The other thing that's up is the 18-foot Christmas tree in the Capital One Plaza, and that looks really, really great. Just waiting for Santa to light it up on Saturday night. And again, thank you, Adrian Facette and ELC of Suffolk for that, since they did buy it and they donated it to us. The only other thing I have is an update on the, on the parks project. The public comment period ended for the conceptual plans. We had the October 7th meeting, and then we set up a period to still receive comments in addition to whatever we heard at the October 7th meeting. That ended on November 14th. Whatever comments we did get, and there might have been six or eight of them, wasn't a lot, but they were passed along to Cornell, and they were certainly put into the mix. Cornell will child now, is finalizing what will be near a final draft of the parks conceptual plan, based on what we heard on the 7th of October and the other comments that were sent along from the comment period. What I'm planning to do, I spoke to them today, I'm looking to set up a meeting in mid-December with Cornell and with the local team that we have here, and then we would further discuss critique. further discuss critique and just kind of fine-tune the plan that they come up with, so we can move forward with that. And again, when we do that, I'm sure we'll find a way to bring it back to the public, get some final approvals, and hopefully by early spring, we should have the working knowledge of what we want to do. Cornell will start putting some cost factors to what we want to do, and then, once we get that whole piece of the puzzle together, we can start to prioritize what we can do, when we can do it, what's feasible, what might.
Should it be all done by July?
Sure, July fourth, that's my date. Yeah, July of maybe twenty eighteen, but yeah, it'll be in July. As far as Clemente Field, we're still underway, refurbishing that, most of the demolition is done, new fencing is being put up now, we're gonna fill up all the fencing that will be put up. What's not gonna be put up is the left field fence, because that, it doesn't water, but it's close to the sensitive area of the left fence, so. I spoke to R.F.C. today, they're gonna go ahead and do everything that they can possibly do, the concrete is in for the dugouts, the stakeouts are pretty much in. We're gonna do everything we can except for that left field fence, that's not gonna go in until we get a permit. With that being said, an application for a permit from the E.E.C. for the work near that sensitive area by the left fence was applied for last week by McLean Associates. It's in the process, I don't know how long it's gonna take, hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later, but once we get that, then we can proceed with what we need to do to finish up in the outfield. What we're looking to do is get the bulk of the renovation out of the way now, get it to a point where we can just button it down for the winter, and then come back hopefully as early as March first, put the turf infield in, put the irrigation in, plant the outfield, and then just finish it up, and hopefully have it done for the first weekend in May, which is when I believe the league starts. I know a girl's softball might be a little bit sooner, we'll keep in touch with Tom Combs if that becomes a problem, he might be able to schedule his first couple of games away before he has a home game here. That's all I have. Very good, Chuck. The last thing I will say, though, personally, on behalf of the board directors, I want to wish everybody here, everybody in the audience, a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd probably better than here.
I'll let it go. First time we touched on this at eight o'clock, it was wild, so. All right, first, despite not knowing what I heard, I'm gonna thank the village for providing free parking for the holidays, very, the chamber is very thankful for that, as you can hear from some of the chamber members, and remind the public that the parking is now free in Patchogue from this Friday, the twenty-seventh, to Sunday, January third, and we're very grateful that the village is doing that. And just to clarify, I guess you had mentioned it's gonna be bags, so that's the best way people know that the meters will be bagged?
Well, what's happening, because of the holiday weekend, we can't do the collection because Village Hall is going to be closed for four days, so we made up free parking that'll go on top of what would normally be the reading area for, those will go on Friday morning by Public Safety, that'll tell you it's free parking, then Monday, when the guys come in to pull the, the money box is out, then the bags will go on, and they'll remain on till January third.
Very good.
One thing, Dave, just to mention, I hope that the store owners and employees continue not parking on Main Street.
I hope they park our bags.
Especially you.
We know you're a car owner.
But we don't want everybody going into those bad habits again, and taking all the good parking spaces that your customers really would like.
Excellent point, Jack and I'll definitely pass that message along to the chamber. All right, the next topic, it just, we had a very successful Christmas holiday boat parade this past weekend, even despite the drizzly rainy weather leading into it, we first started with the most amazing red sunset I think anybody's ever seen, if those of you guys can't see it. And then, of course, a wonderful parade, so I want to thank Bill Hilton and Maria, who served as the judge, Michael White, Lauren Nichols, who served as the judge, for the judges for the parade, and I have the results for you. The winner for the best use of lights was the number thirteen entry called Salt Talk, and that was that very large wood boat that came in. There were twenty-six entries when you included the sand boat, that boat.
Was that guy in with the jet rocket thing?
He was part of, unfortunately, he didn't make it all the way down where Iowa Station Boat, he did, that's actually a gentleman from the Viset family, who owns the aquarium in Viset Nursery, and I did see some video, and just to let the public who wasn't there, there was a gentleman who approached the chamber about participating, he had like, what I guess, called a water pack, a jet water pack, and then it could actually shoot into the air and actually into the water, he must have had a, right, he was underneath the water, and you could see that he was all lit up, and it was, I mean, I could see it from the distance, he didn't make it all the way down, but it was a pretty amazing sight that hopefully we're gonna bring back together.
We went just adjacent to him, and it was pretty incredible, he was quite a character.
Yeah, yeah, we have to talk to him about, maybe just a little earlier, he was throwing some of the boats down, I guess the way, you know, the boats really couldn't pass him by, but it was a great spectacle to have certainly. So anyway, so that was Salt Talk, Best Use of Lights. Best Use of Sound was the number nine entry, the boat named Kelly Voice. Best in theme, and the theme this year was the Disney Christmas. The best in theme was the number twelve boat called D'Agio. The best overall, the one that won for just being the best-looking boat, the favorite boat according to the judges, was the number four entry, Four My Girls, this is captained by Bruce Parker, I think we're gonna be named with the award after him, because pretty much every year he wins that award, because every year.
Which one was that?
It was the number four entry, it was basically, I think, right behind the ferry, and he looked like the Pirates of the Caribbean, he had the sails on, and that was his theme, Pirates of the Caribbean, and yes, he does a great job every year. And the last award I'll announce is the night before, we did have the viewing parties where the People's Choice Award was voted on, and that was voted on entry number eleven, called Summer Wind. So it was again a great parade, twenty-second year, and it's still going strong, it's nice to see, despite the weather and the elements, we always get a good crowd coming out to start the holidays that way. All right, so as we move now into Thanksgiving, I do want to highlight another great event that always happens every year in the community, I know the mayor always highlights it as well, is Thanksgiving Eve will be the annual interfaith service at seven o'clock at Temple Bethel. It's a non-denominational, all faiths are invited, and it's represented from all the faiths that come together to celebrate Thanksgiving as one, and kind of talk about what makes us similar as opposed to talking about the differences.
It's really one of the best events you can go to.
It's a great way to.
About an hour.
And it really gets you into the spirit of what the season's all about.
They'll pay to collect your box, right?
Yeah, they will be paying, and all that money collected will go to the food pantries in the community. All right, following that, we're very excited, this Saturday, as everyone knows, is known as now a Small Business Saturday, a time that will really encourage people to shop and support their downtown merchants, and then remind people, not only are you gonna get great sales, great deals, and exceptional service, you're not gonna get in a mall, supporting your downtown and making it vibrant is supporting your own property values, supporting your own community, because the strength of Main Street, as the mayor says, it goes back and forth, we're intertwined, and if we have a strong Main Street, we're gonna have a strong community. So please come on down, we tried to make it a lot of fun, we're gonna have the Tri-Valley Brass Band playing at Capital One from one to three, the St. Joseph's Sharp Glee Club from St. Joseph's will be doing some caroling along Main Street, W.B.H.M. Radio is gonna do a live broadcast, and we'll also have Pictures with Santa at the Patchogue Theater. And to encourage shoppers to really get out there and shop, we have created a Patchogue Photo Scavenger Hunt, where if you come register at the Patchogue Theater, you'll provide a list of about forty items that we ask you to go search out and take pictures of, we do provide you a list of where these items would be found, we don't tell you what item is at what location, but you'll have a list of the items, a list of the locations, so you go in there, you look for that, and you take a picture of it, you send it to the hashtag Patchogue Photo Scavenger Hunt, and you accumulate points. The person who gets the most points or gets the most will be given a gift basket of gift certificates from all our membership, all our member stores. So great time to get out there and get your Christmas shopping done. And of course, that follows, I'm sure, and Bill will be talking about the big parade that'll be happening following it at six o'clock, the Good Christmas Parade. December fifth is the menorah, the official lighting of the menorah, that'll be, excuse me, December sixth, I apologize, December the sixth, which is a Sunday, and that'll be at seven o'clock at Capital One, and of course, we invite the whole community down as Rabbi Joel Levinson from Temple Bethel will lead us in the lighting of the menorah. I do want to highlight that we're very excited that that following week, Kill Wins, that we all talked about, is gonna have their official grand opening on December the twelfth, so we're really looking forward to that. And the last thing I just want to highlight is our membership meeting is tomorrow, I just want to invite the board, they want to come to our membership meeting at noon at Meatball Place, and our plans are certainly underway for midnight on Main, I know we're gonna be meeting with some of our Public Safety tomorrow to kind of talk about some planning for that, but that's looking like it's gonna be another great night as well. Unless anybody's got any questions for me, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, I'm gonna scoot out of here, because my wife is patiently waiting for Brian and Turkey, and that's where I'll be in there.
David, menorah, five or six?
Better.
Menorah lighting, what time?
Oh, seven o'clock, it's December the sixth, so the time is seven.
Seven, seven.
I said five, at least that's what he asked for Joel Levinson to send over today.
They usually do it early.
They usually do, I thought so, too, I don't know why he chose seven and four, I'll confirm that with him, but that's what we sent over, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm very happy to be able to announce these resolutions tonight, because it really is a culmination of two years of work with the parking meters, and it really indicates that what we said we were gonna do, we do, as someone told me today, it's promises kept, and we promised that we would take the money that we're making out of the parking meters and put it to purchasing properties for parking. Just last week, we had the opportunity to be together down at Church Street, and the demolition of the bank drive-up building was done to make room for more parking. Now, I have to thank Attorney Egan for the work that he did for the following resolutions that we're proud to say is another phase to bringing more parking to the village of Patchogue, more on Church Street. Resolution authorizing the purchase of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street and the demolition of all structures thereon. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution designating the Board of Trustees as the lead agency pursuant to secret for the purchase of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street and demolition of all structures thereon. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution designating the Board of Trustees as the lead agency pursuant to secret for the purchase of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street and demolition of all structures thereon. Motion?
Second.
Second.
A resolution adopting a negative declaration pursuant to secret for the purchase of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street and the demolition of all structures thereon. Motion?
Second.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the purchase of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Streets. Motion?
Second.
A resolution authorizing the acquisition of real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street and demolition of structure thereon for parking in and for the village at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars, and authorizing the issuance of five hundred thousand dollar serial bonds of said village to pay the cost thereof, funded from the parking meter revenue. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution designating the Board of Trustees as the lead agency pursuant to secret for the demolition of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution adopting a negative declaration pursuant to secret for the demolition of the real property located at twenty-seventh Church Street. It's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it for those.
So we officially own?
Now, we officially, we will soon, we officially own twenty-seventh Church Street, hopefully we'll get that demolished as soon as possible, we'll be meeting with Superintendent Dean on the next few days to discuss plans for those two properties and others in the village. So thank you, Attorney Egan, for all the work you and your staff did on that, it was...
Just a comment, it's a four-family, we've worked with the landlord and the occupants, five families, we've worked, earlier Dennis mentioned Adrian Facette from the E.L.C. Economic Period Council, working with their staff to make sure that the people that are living there are placed in us to be out on the streets, so it's not one of those things where we start with bulldozers saying, "Hello, anybody left in there?", and we drive through the back door, we make sure that everybody is taken care of.
Okay, and I have one more, request approval authorizing a change order in relation to the delivery and installation of the theater seats in the amount of eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars and fifty-three cents, it's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have.
You have one more, Jim.
I have one more?
Change order for the scaffolding?
Oh, right. So. This is a resolution to accept the change order for reduction in cost of the scaffolding offered in the bid for the scaffolding for the theater, it went from...
We're getting a credit of eleven.
We're getting a credit of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, and I think Peter Sarich worked on that, is that correct? I'll get that price down.
Correct, that's a savings to the village.
Yeah, a saving, yeah, savings to the village. So when we saw the first bid, we were a little bit interested in getting that knocked down a little bit, and the contractor did do that for us, and I think he had a lot to do with that. Okay, that's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the wonderful events, ladies and gentlemen. Jack, after a minute, I was disappointed that you didn't mention the official kickoff of the Thanksgiving season with the big concert at the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
But anyway.
Yeah, Arlo Guthrie concert.
Official kickoff of Thanksgiving, that's an Arlo Guthrie concert.
And I had a wonderful opportunity of driving Arlo back to the hotel that night.
Yeah, did you see me sit on the bumper?
And what does one talk to Arlo Guthrie about, driving back?
The jokey.
Yes, 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 and our kids, that's what we talk about.
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting approval tonight designating the Board of Trustees as lead agency pursuant to secret for the reconstruction of Mascot Dock, this has been a long haul, obviously, I think if you remember, it was like, two days after we got the letter of approval from Irene Sandyhit, we started all over again, so we're finally getting somewhere, so that's a motion.
What was the problem? Motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was it a million, four, that we get?
It was one, three, one, four, something like that, we were here.
We get one, two. Requesting... One, two. Well, one million dollars.
Requesting approval adopting a negative declaration pursuant to secret for the reconstruction of Mascot Dock.
Second. Aye.
Requesting approval about the bid for the Mascot Dock reconstruction contract number one, the pile installation.
Second.
Right.
One of the things that came out of the audit a couple of years ago is the fact that we needed to have a resolution to accept funding, whether they be grants, as I'm sitting looking at this thing, should we have a motion tonight to accept funding?
It can't hurt, it was, the comptroller's audit question was on the receipt of grants that we applied for, this is really a grant, but it certainly couldn't hurt to do it, so it would be a motion to accept the receipt of the FEMA funds for the reconstruction of the dock.
For a amount, not to say one point five, but it is a low point.
Or such lesser amount is set by FEMA.
As such amount.
Requesting approval to accept, to set amount of FEMA, to make the repairs to Mascot Dock.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, requesting approval for Jacob to provide and install a sidewalk at eighty-one Jennings Avenue.
Dennis to be reversed by the property owner. All in favor?
Aye.
Requesting approval for Jacob to provide and install asphalt curbs and sidewalk in the Church Street parking lot for additional parking spaces. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
And I do have one thing hot off the press, you remember Noddy, who used to work here? This is part of the LaSalle Foundation, every year at Christmas Day after the service, the twelve boxers, and at one P.M. they do a little walk, it's gonna require one Public Safety, one Public Safety guy, so I am requesting approval for the LaSalle Foundation to be the same again this year. Motion?
Second. That's Christmas Day, Jim.
Christmas Day, yes.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you, happy holiday, everybody, enjoy.
Trustee Fleece?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I just have one thing, it's to request approval for W.B.A.B. I just have one thing, it's to request approval for WBAP to conclude the 13th Annual New Year's Day cold tender run in the village, ending at the Emporium with the assistance from Public Safety. Now, this event is to raise money for the Camp Adventure Program, which provides a camp experience for Long Island children fighting cancer and other debilitating and life-threatening diseases. So that's why we're in favor of this, and I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
We've done it over the last several years, we've both said it.
And that's all I have, and happy Thanksgiving everybody.
I have nothing, happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, hello. Good evening everybody, I don't have a lot to report today, I've been here long enough. I'll just encourage you to stop down at the by-park space and see the exhibit, if you haven't seen it, at the Path Gallery, which is called Portrait Self-Portrait. And it's artists who each one has two pieces. One is a portrait and one is a self-portrait, but they're extremely well done, really great pieces, great works, and you should definitely check it out. If you're in the mood for a movie, did you know that Thanksgiving is the most popular movie day? I had no idea, I would never go to a movie until Thanksgiving.
We always go to movies, we go to an early show.
Oh, see, we eat in the middle of the day, so then I fall asleep. But if you're in the mood for a movie at Plaza Cinema, we have Sufferjet. And my mom saw it, she said it's excellent. Sufferjet. So that's all I have to report for Tuesday. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. No, that's not, that's not for discussion. That has to go before some other boards.
They got the money.
Yeah, but they're not ready, they're a fan to reach the approval stage yet.
I just have a couple of things here. Nothing very important at all. I hope you all come to the Christmas Holiday Parade. Are you ever seeing this?
Yes, she is.
And what year, how many years now?
Dr. Miller from Jack, I think when Paige was born, so she's five. So it's five years, and I actually believe I may have recruited another board member to assist in judging. Attorney Egan is going to possibly. We're reciprocating, he's on the MC for this, he's the MC for the same project.
That's right, that's right.
We make a good team.
Rain day Philly, is there a rain day?
No, rainy, and it's gonna be cold.
It's gonna be warm on Thursday.
Thursday?
Thanksgiving's gonna be warm. It's a warm day on Thursday, maybe it's gonna be warm on Saturday.
We might have a couple showers, but.
But the parade's on Saturday, just in case I was confusing. And Mr. Mayor, I have something else. It's not very, but everybody can go. I'm pleased to announce that my wife and I purchased a beautiful country home on Forge River in Massacre. Because of the residency requirements of my elected seat on the Board of Trustees, it is with a heavy heart that I submit my resignation effective December 1st, 2015. It has been an honor to serve the residents of Patchogue for the past 28 years. My career working for the people of Patchogue though started as an alternate to the planning board, continuing with a seat on the planning board, zoning board, a chair on the zoning board, and ultimately an amazing 10 years on the Board of Trustees, serving as Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. I cherish the friendships I have made, both professionally and personally. I would like to thank the residents, all of you, my fellow trustees, and especially my good friend Paul Pontieri, for giving me the confidence to help lead us all over the hurdles of revitalizing the parks, the neighborhoods, and Main Street. I believe I have left the village in a better place. Sincerely, William Hill. That's all I have. Thank you all.
You know, I've always believed that you should be judged as to whether it's a better place because you walked through it. And Billy, you came in the door, how many years back? Billy and I first met at the gym in Melville. And I said, oh, you're from Patchogue, you have a Patchogue. And I just got on Billy's foot, I think he gave it for. You sat on a plank, did you, to begin? You said Michelle.
That's Shelley face.
First thing I played and said to her when you walked in, calls me up, Angie Julian, the chairman, playing board at that time, calls me up the next day, says, who the hell is your secretary?
Who's it Scott?
We've been friends ever since. Patchogue isn't a better place because you have to walk through the door. You know, we may not let you slam it on the way out, we gotta figure out something else for you to do. I think one of the things people have to realize is, over the last 10 years, every parade, every major event in the parks, not counting what Billy has done in terms of what we see downtown. But everything that happened in the parks over the last 10 years, that has gone through Billy's fingers. That he took the parks, his kids played in the parks. And it is really with... He presented, said I accept you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, as a buyer, I've written more, and I had written, but I didn't want to put this on my official letter here. It was 11 years ago when my good friend Paul Pontieri asked me to fill up a vacant seat on the board till he found somebody electable. My friends asked me why I needly accept. My answer was that this is the only man I would follow off the cliff. And it's been a hell of a ride.
You're right, I'm sorry. Do you, but don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it, I got somebody.
Somebody electable. And you went on to get elected.
And I said this to Linda today when we talked a little bit about this, is that 80% of the time, I always thought I knew how he was gonna vote. Never quite sure, but I was pretty sure. 20% of the time I had no idea how it was, I mean absolutely none. I looked at it, I look at Brian, I look at, ah, there we go. But 100% of the time, I knew that he was voting what he felt was in the best interest of the community. And that's how you have to be judged. You have to be judged on your vote by is he voting, is it a political reason he voted? Or does he truly believe what's best for the community? And I can honestly say there are no votes that I've ever seen Billy take that were politically driven. You know, we would talk about things, we would... And then many times I knew coming out that he and I were on different sides of this. Never bothered me, because I knew in his mind that he has his reasons for why it is the way it is. And Billy, out of all the things, that's the thing that always impressed me about him. Is that you always understood that your job is about the people sitting out there, not the people sitting up here. And not too many guys realize that, the people that sit where we sit, realize what a big responsibility this is. It starts in the seat out there and ends up back here. And it is with great hesitance. And, you know, that I asked for a motion to accept his resignation as president. Motion?
Second. Second, on the favor?
Moving the man's coming tomorrow, we don't have a choice. Okay.
I'll jump up here first. I just, I heard a rumor earlier today. I couldn't let even provide without coming up here and just recognizing. Bill is a true gentleman on board, always deliberate every decision. Was a great person to lean on. We've had our differences of opinions about a few different things over the years, but always respected his friendship. And wanted to personally thank him for his service and wish him, well, you and Maria deserve every happiness that comes your way. If you have anything, feel free to give me a reference.
Motion to adjourn?
Tell you that last year.
Make motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor?
Second.